Day May ninth, two thousand twenty-two times seven P M. I'll call a meeting. We already have a notice and a poster open meeting hours on the back wall. Roll call Bill. Dustin.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Minutes of the two thousand, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. I'll make a motion to approve. Owen, favor say I?
I.
opposed. Presentation of bills, any questions?
What's the future of programming, just out of curiosity?
That's that's on the very front.
Okay. I wasn't sure what was on there.
We have to pay for them.
Okay. Any, uh, any else? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Owen, favor say I?
I.
opposed. Uh, we're gonna have a ten minute public comment time for anything that is on the agenda. If anybody has any comments? Nothing?
Randy, do you wanna say anything? He said, did anybody?
This is a public comment for anything that isn't on the agenda.
Yeah, I would, uh, our church is still not able to use the water state and they're saying it smells. Can we get a test at, at the church?
I have no problem.
Uh, why do I still complain about it? I'm gonna wait till see what they have at the church and then we're hopefully if we need to. But I thank you for that video. I think we'd be, cuz I know different ones are, it's kind of helping me over there, just carrying the water in and not using it.
I can see a little wrong with sending a water sample from the church. No, I don't, I know, I don't care what it's all she got on. Go get a water sample, send it. And if it's still a problem, some will lose some, did some, I want a sample. What's it cost? Thirty bucks, seventy bucks?
Uh, get an order one state.
Okay.
You guys get a test and offer.
That's what we offered last year, so.
Maybe I have a problem with that.
Don't know. Thank you.
Any other comments? We'll move on to the new business then. Uh, number one on the agenda is the well improvements in the S E A D A bid package number six. Change order number two, the certificate of substantial, substantial completion and the application and certificate for final payment number six. The amount of seventy-four thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
This was our, uh, final payment from the well contractor. We did finally get the, uh, product completion. And so he extended it last month. Evidently there was the water quality issue that was discussed. I had sent up a, a follow-up to that to, to give you guys an idea on the timeline of the, the wells as they were put back online. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments on it.
Well, yeah, I'm just curious what really happened.
Well.
So you're saying like he raised the water teller that day like twenty-five foot and everything broke loose or, or where'd the stuff come from that day if that well wasn't turned on? That's my only question.
What, what's going on is we've got water moving in diff- different directions.
So it's just convenient, just out of convenience, the same day they were working on it.
It just happened. I mean, it, it didn't come from the well of sixty-six. We do know that because it came the day before the well was put, put back in the service.
Right, but they were working on the well meter the day it happened. So you're saying, oh, we accidentally flipped a switch, right?
No, no.
Cuz we've got, I mean, I've never seen filters pulled out of places that just took place after that, plugged up the whole system. So, and I was just convenient, so our water tower got pulled that day.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna stir things up a little bit and, and I know Alan's flushing periodically to try to.
Yeah, I know, I had to call him and ask him to tell him to flush.
Yeah.
No, he wasn't.
Okay.
Well, we've also got water running through lines of double depression that.
I'm not, I'm not arguing.
For a hundred years, so who knows what's getting blown up inside the lines, you know?
I know, it's just convenience. The day that they put the, whatever they put on the deal, that he come up to my house and locked on my house at eight o'clock and I said, you should see my water.
Yeah.
So, it's just straight up convenience.
It, has it ever happened in the past?
Nothing like that.
Nothing like that at all?
It is a whole house.
We, we had, we've had manganese before, but not yet. I should've been wise enough to get a sample right out of the tap that night is where I should've done. I wasn't the only one. There was other people up and down the street that had the same problem, so.
Yeah, I guess we're, we're gonna see a little bit of that, but as we, as we do.
Like I said, the water smells so bad at the church, they can't drink it right now, so.
Well, one thing you might try to do if you can is, is flush their service line. It might, might help too. I know when I was in Crete, Nebraska, that's what they would do. They'd come out and actually flush the service lines to clean those out. Because the, the church has been there for a long.
Right.
So, and, and these wells, we know the wells were encrusted, so we know that that, that's in the system. It, it's not, it's not a health issue. It's an aesthetic issue is what it is.
Right, smells and tastes.
That was the question that I had when I come, come to the board. Was it something that's harmful to people?
No, it is not.
And nobody really could answer that, that night, so.
The, the city has to continually monitor their water quality, so we, we know.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Have you ever seen anything, I don't think.
We took a sample, when was the last time we took a sample since that day?
Last week.
Last week. Have you seen theirs all since then?
I got, this is all just the wells.
From last week?
Yep.
Which, which samples are you taking this back to our?
Well, yeah, these, I back, I back tea all, all wells and then plus our monthly sample.
Okay.
Our monthly sample was at the Methodist Church.
And that was this week?
No, I'll come back, well, last week, yeah.
I got theirs all already?
Yeah. These are the, I got the.
What's the name of, let me see.
These are the wells.
Well, no, I, what I'm asking is to.
What I would, what I would ask.
Worst example from the church.
I would like our church to have a copy of that. And the reason why is because then it's gonna calm their fears of the.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I'm saying? I, I, I don't want them to sit there and be afraid to come to church because of water. You know, and then a lot of them use the water. So, I would like a copy of it, if we get one when we, when it comes back. Just, just so that they're, they can see it and it says it's safe and they'll feel okay about it.
Will this clear up over time if we flush regularly?
If, get the flushing done there, it will subside, so.
Okay. Can I ask you just out of curiosity, like what's the best way to go ahead and flush the system?
Well, um, what you can do, you can do directional flushing where you start at one point and move.
One at a time?
Well, yeah, you're gonna do one fire at a time, yeah.
So when he's doing it, he should just go, meter, that's what I'm asking. Where, where, where we're trying to flush it and I just randomly go to this side here down here and this side here over here. I mean, what's, what do you think is the best way to go?
The, the best way to probably do it is start at one end of town and work your way. If you, if you're gonna go east and west, work your way all the way down that.
Down that block and.
And then come, come all the way down through the whole system, I mean, from one end of town to the other end of town.
Methodist Church still, if you wanna see it, Randy, do you wanna copy of that then? Or do you wanna see it?
No, if you do our, that's good enough. I just wanted to see a bit of my, you know, rather than have that wonder.
Any other discussion on that or? Is this all?
Um, no, I haven't. Free. I think you better do it in three options or can they approve all those items in one option?
Um, I would, I couldn't see why you couldn't approve it all. Iterating what you are approving, that you're approving the K out, the change order and the final completion.
Uh, we'll need, if somebody wants to make a motion to, uh, accept the change order number two, the certificate for substantial completion and the application and certificate for final payment on bid package number six.
Kane? I'll second.
Bill? Dustin?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Number two on the agenda is we're opening a public hearing regarding the three-digit development block grant eighteen W W dash zero zero two from the Department of Economic Development. We'll open the hearing at seven eleven P M.
Okay, I'm gonna put my second hat on. I wish I would have brought some hats, could change hats tonight. Um, this is, this public hearing is for the, uh, the community development block grant had a, uh, a grant that was involved in this water project that we, we just basically completed. Um, the C D V G grant number is eighteen dash W W dash zero zero two. The village of Ewing received a three hundred eighty-five thousand dollar grant from the C D V G to fund this water system improvement project. Within this, uh, project, we also had the drinking, the drinking water state revolving loan fund. It is funding, uh, part of the, the shared cost of the grant. Plus it has its own grant to go along with it. It's our loan forgiveness part of the, the, uh, project. The, the grant has been, the C D V G grant, grant have been, uh, expended to date. Um, the full three hundred eighty-five thousand. No person, businesses or farms were displaced as a result of this grant. And we will, um, follow this up in your June meeting. We'll have a, uh, close out cost, uh, invoice that we'll be sending for consideration at your next meeting for this grant. And then the, the close out costs will be submitted through AM final. The second page of this, uh, handout that I gave you shows the, uh, the, the project budget for the, the original project budget. And as you can see, most of the cost for the C D V G was actually for the water cow. And then the final sheet that we have there is a map that shows kinda where the improvements were. We had water main improvements throughout town to help facilitate, uh, getting water throughout town, less head loss. We improved the wells, of course. We replaced a, a water main that had asbestos in it. And then also a new tower is the final part of this project. So the purpose of this hearing is, is the state requirement, they require to have a public hearing. So if the public has any comments regarding this project, um, this would be the time to entertain your, your comments.
Is the water tower full then?
Yeah, we got, uh.
Six feet, twelve feet.
Twelve feet left.
Okay, I guess with, uh, no comments, I'll let you finalize your hearing there.
Close the, uh, public hearing at seven fifteen P M. Move to number three on the agenda is the quote for sealing the cracks in the streets and major highway and street service.
Was this the people that did it last time? I think his son's doing it now or whatever, right?
And he said, if you want, you don't have, you know, you do whatever ones you want. You don't have to do them all.
Needs to be done. I don't know if you wanna pull another bid from somewhere else, but it needs to be done. We need to figure out a budget because if we don't, we're not gonna have a stream.
The total was approximately forty-one blocks. They were remove all weeds, blow out of cracks, clean seal and squeeze you all tracks went down. For the total of thirty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars. I think, uh, and it says.
We don't have to pay till.
Yeah. We split it into two payments, one payment, one half when they're done and the other half due in December. Or nothing under. I don't, to me, if it prolongs the life of your streets, that's pretty cheap, I think.
Yeah. If we're doing, we're doing forty blocks, right?
Yeah.
Forty blocks.
So much invested in there. Well, I mean, that's gotta be a lot of something, it hasn't been done for eight years.
We looked it up, no, uh, when was it done last?
Six, sixteen, fifteen or sixteen.
Seven years then? Yeah, yeah.
He, that was, his, this was his first job after he took over.
Go ahead, Randy, what's your question?
Um, up by James system's corner, is that storm sewer collapsing? If you look at it, it's right over the top of the storm sewer.
Cause I haven't noticed that.
Right on James corner, on this side. Just a question.
Right, where they just redid that, right? You're saying, you just put that in.
Yeah, it's right from the storm sewer, the storm sewer from James corner to the basketball.
Just a big dip showing up there?
There's something showing up in there.
Okay.
I, I don't know if it is or not, but sure, could check.
Put it on hold. I'll make a motion to do the cracks outside.
Kane, do you second that?
Yeah. Bill? Dustin?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Well, I think I'm gonna let you guys go. Uh, these cemetery maps are back here for you, Sheriff, and.
Okay.
Let me know if you've got any comments or what we need to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, move to number four on the agenda, uh, village entertaining idea of turning school into a community center.
Do you wanna go to hand anymore? Need to say, I mean. I guess at the end of the day, here's the scenario. Schools there, we can probably get them up to the same thing Orchard did. I made some phone calls. Uh, I don't know if the town group will be able to support it without passing a half a cent sales tax to semi-support it. There's a bunch of young kids in town that obviously are here to, you know, talk about it.
They've talked to me about it. I've had discussions with a lot of people my age, um, that would likely see that, um, just public, you know, just opinion. So, uh, we're just basically.
Basically wanted to, wanted to come in here and ask what you guys thought, obviously the rest of the world. And maybe if we could put it on the agenda next month and get something done where we know if we could get the sales tax deal done, entertain, you know, entertain the idea of making a purchase agreement with the sales tax pass. And that's my, my suggestion because I, without that, I don't have the gold to even take it on. So, that's just my opinion.
So what would that put the tax rate at?
Six point five total. We're only at a half a percent right now.
There's, there's no other, cuz it's E U standard.
Just a half a percent.
It's E U standard two for local banks, I think.
I'm just, I'm gonna state my opinion. I think you know what my opinion is, that I think that's a money pit that a guy is. Cause even that, I've got all the numbers, you know, we talked about this a year and a half ago and the time passed, but the numbers haven't changed, it's still.
What are the questions?
Two, these are the two thousand nineteen numbers from the school.
Fully functional, right? You're talking with all the kids in lock stock.
Yeah, the gas, the, gas, electric, water, sewer, garbage is two thousand nine hundred, two thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-eight cents a month.
For utilities, right?
Pretty, just for utilities.
Okay.
You know, if you have that, um, you know, that's, like you said, but that's with kids in there nine months out of the year.
Right.
You have that, it's still thirty-six thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars. And we raised last year our sales tax about twenty-four thousand. So that still puts you twelve thousand behind the eight ball. Plus you're inheriting a half a million dollar headache.
Right, and then otherwise we're gonna be looking at it and somebody's gonna end up with a shit hole in town. We can put a fence around it and take care of them. Right? Cuz they're not tearing it out. I can straight up tell you, the school's not tearing it out. So, take that for what it's worth.
We might be able to talk to the city lawyer too and see how, I'll be able to give you an attorney too. There, there might be a way that you can allocate some of those funds more typical, so like if, if you were to apply to doze, you own a crappy house next to your house, you wanna doze that one, we'll give you five thousand for that. But there might be a way to like, look into planning and see if we could do more than five thousand for a project like that.
I get it. Here's my opinion. We have an opportunity to build a place, something cool weddings. We can do all this stuff. Hey, if you today, if you can't afford it, guess what? We can sell it. Right? There aren't enough sellers, somebody, we don't know, right? My opinion. I mean, like I said, we call it a half a million, call it a turny dollar building, call it whatever. If we ever think about building anything like that ever in our entire life, it's not feasible. So we're wiping that off of the face of the earth if we don't move on.
But, I mean, as far as the wedding bill goes, my thoughts on that are ninety percent weddings happen in the middle of the summer.
Correct.
Who's gonna have a wedding dance in a school building when it's a hundred degrees outside?
Well, I'm not having that argument, but I.
You know what air conditioning unit costs? It's Orchard's paying for them. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'll bet you I can go for seventy-five.
It's still seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right, right.
The position I'm sitting here in is.
Is we just can't take it on, right?
Our job on this board is to spend taxpayer money as wisely as possible.
As wisely as we can, right?
And that, I, this is my opinion. I'm only one vote, but my vote is that it's not very wise.
So why can't we move our city hall up there and the library down there and do all this stuff and put it under one roof? Then that's a feasible dream. Or if we sell this building for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put the air conditioner in, is that possible?
That's a big if.
That's a big if.
Who's gonna give you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this building?
Try building a building like this for two hundred and fifty thousand, right? We got funding now. Somebody give forty grand down to start business in town. Might be bad, must start an auto mechanic shop. Maybe somebody wants to start a daycare over there, right? Maybe somebody wants to open a coffee shop over there, right? I don't know. I, it's just my opinion. I just feel like, I feel like we're just gonna stay here and die and that's what we're gonna do.
I'm not saying that at all.
Well, like I said.
But you can't throw good money after bad.
What do you mean? We can take a chance on it. In two years, if it ain't working, we can sell it, right?
If they can't sell it now, who, who are you gonna sell it to?
Well, we're gonna end up with a shit hole in town anyway. Somebody's gonna bid ten bucks on it, right? Cuz we're gonna dump it, they're dumping it. That's a fact. They're dumping. So it's going to auction, it's gonna get bought by somebody and then we're gonna be stuck with it. We're gonna lose the whole city park. We're gonna lose the whole deal. You know, like I said, it's just a building. I don't know. You're just saying it's not feasible. There's no way we can do this.
I don't, like I said, that's my opinion. I ran the numbers and I don't see how you make.
So we make a one percent sales tax, now we got fifty-four thousand.
But you have to base all that on if it passes.
Right, and that's why I said we make an offer contingent on the sale tax pass and we'll let the town to say.
Would it work to sell?
Ten thousand dollars, lock stock number.
Come, what do they gotta do with that? They're gonna buy it?
But they're in the same boat we are, that they bought themselves a half a million dollar headache.
But they must think that there's an opportunity there.
But they have that. They needed a shot because their town shop burned down and their village office was falling down and their library was falling down. They have that by it. We're not in that boat, I mean.
Uh, would it be possible that they put office space in there and like rent it out if someone even wanted some, like an O Stewart has?
Then you open the new candle rooms.
Oh, that's fair, that's right.
Because the minute you put a for-profit business in there, then you start paying sales tax or property taxes. And who knows what the property tax is?
Does, would a bear be considered for profit having a mental care town?
No, it's not for profit. Though I.
Does a bear own their building? Would they be considered for profit?
No, they're not.
I'm just trying to think of like, what's the town?
They hack that space.
Okay. That's from the township, that's not, the owner says.
We don't own that.
Yeah, but it's, it's a nonprofit, correct?
Well, I'm just saying, if, if they're renting though, like I'm just trying to.
If you put a for-profit business in, and the heritage.
That's why we're in our building too, like we're, we're a nonprofit and.
And so is a secondhand store, so is a secondhand store. Give you an extra six hundred dollars a month for two rooms, get fifteen thousand dollars from the library. You don't know what a bear's gonna pay us. Take the city hall, hall out of here, we cut all down the utilities on that, we sell this place. Um, I just think it's possible. Like I said, the way I look at it is all these people are gonna start dying, you know, if you today, when you're driving around, wouldn't it be nice to have something to say, hey, look, there's a gym my kid can go play in? There's a place our town team basketball can play in? Or are we just supposed to go out to summer now? I mean, that's, that's my deal. I'm just being, I'm just saying, I, I, it's a chance.
I, I'm the same way, but if, if they're, if they're gonna sell the whole thing for ten thousand dollars, which I don't think will happen. But if they're gonna sell the whole thing for ten thousand dollars, why the, the group of people that want it, why don't you go together and buy it?
Because I can't pass a half a percent sales tax to take care of it, can I, James? Are you guys gonna run it for me for fifty thousand then?
No.
Right.
But we can't afford to own it if you can.
If I, we can if we pass the sales tax, but you say the utilities were what?
But that's a big if. We, how many times was the sales tax on ballot before we?
Like I said, we have to go contingent on a deal. November it won't pass, then it goes to public auction.
I heard you.
Right? So what ifs or what ifs for the people about not, not for me to deny?
Will the school wait till November?
I had a phone call with one of the board meetings. It said if we make an offer contingent on a deal and you're in, in for it, I'm sure we'll set and wait. But I'm, it's just one board member, you know?
So that's something that needs to be decided.
Right, that's why we're in here. I know, that's why we're in here right now. And this is exactly what I knew I was gonna be up against, so. I know, I know, exactly.
It's just my opinion. I'm only one vote on a five man board.
You are one vote, but you're the mayor and same thing, you wanna talk to field lights about what happened to you and you just, I'm not gonna get into it. You are running the show. So if your wave does carry it, I'm more.
Yeah, I forced it.
I never stand for forced amount of time at all. But I'll say your, your demeanor was, we can't do nothing.
What does everybody else say?
I think we should at least take a look at it and with the pros and cons, I know like it's kind of a big decision, but I mean, like Brett and some of the younger kids or people my age, um, we would like to see something like this. We would, um, just to, um, I know feasibility is the issue, so I mean, like if we can figure something out or make something work, we should at least entertain the idea, um, so that's my thoughts.
Do you have an idea of how much you could recoup in costs from rentals?
Well, no, we haven't got that far. That was the whole idea of operating this in and setting it up for making actions next month. You know, that was the whole, the whole entertainment idea. So then I could call the board tomorrow and say, yeah, the town's entertaining the idea. We're gonna be contingent on this. How do you feel? Then I was gonna call some other people. I was gonna make all the phone calls I can. But like I said, if two out of five people want it to happen, it's not gonna happen.
My thing, you know, we're two million dollars in debt, you know, that, that's more. If we can figure out a different, maybe, but.
Well, like I said, you know, it's paid for with the sales tax, right?
If it taxes.
Right, and that's what I said, that's contingent on the.
Okay, we didn't designate it just for that?
Well, they build community centers all the time, all over countries and put sales tax on stuff.
Sure do. Isn't there a USDA community center?
There are, I think it's a matching grant and I'll have to check into that. I can get like.
Sorry, didn't mean to.
No, you're fine. I, like I said, I don't know all the answers. That's why I'm here. And like I said, I, I don't know if they'll wait till November. The conversation I said is if we make an offer on the school contingent on the sales tax pass, and he said, I think it'll probably go six oh, but I couldn't be wrong. But I couldn't be wrong. Cause they wanna get rid of it just as bad as anybody in the world. And like I said, otherwise, I know what's gonna happen, somebody's gonna come in there with a thirty thousand dollar check when the tractor's parked and they're gonna be a gym there. So. I've already got the conversation. I mean, if it brings that, or they'll take thirty grand for it, you know? Like you said, unless you know somebody that's gonna take this on privately to keep that as a gym, you show me that guy and I'm in. But, I, I've been trying to do this for over a year and haven't heard anybody, the only person that I did was Jimmy Good's daughter. But, Leila in New York, and what, how, what are they willing to do, you know? So unless she's entertaining the idea yet, which they had talked about, I don't know where they're at. But I couldn't do anything until we had this meeting today. I mean, I get it's a lot, but like I said, what does our community have here? What do we have, what do we have that separates us? I mean, we got all these people out walking down the highway, running around, we're, we're retirement community, you know? Get a keypad charger, twenty-nine dollar maintenance fee, they can go walk around the gym, you know? We could put a little weight room in there, we could make a family, you know, for two hundred and fifty dollars a month for a weight room key access, you know? I'm not saying this thing's not possible. I'm just saying. That I don't see an opportunity to ever have a building this size basically given to you. I mean, essentially given to you, and I understand it's a headache. But you can also turn around and sell that headache. Right away too, you know? I don't know, I don't know, like I said, I thought there was gonna be maybe some more younger kids here, but they're not, so. Maybe it's all hopes and dreams.
So the USDA has a community facilities and direct, community facilities, direct loan and grant program. Um, they're targeting communities under five thousand people and you can apply. It doesn't give you a whole lot of like info on what they would necessarily match or give or how that would all work, but basically you have to qualify with under five thousand people. To hit certain portions of it, they won't, they, it all is kind of based on your low to moderate income level, so you, like you may might qualify on some of that. I don't know, we'll have to look at that, but I can send the link over, I don't have to reach out to USDA rep and, uh, Carney to get more info from them. But I don't know what that would look like, um. If law wise or forgiveness or anything like that, but there are whole programs.
I mean, I don't want to break the town, I don't know what the dollar figures are, but like I said, if it's one percent and. Hundred and fifty people vote for it, then we know where we stand, that didn't work out, hundred and fifty people vote no, as long as there's no consequences, I mean. That's just my opinion, now if we fail that sales tax and we lose our other one or some stipulation like that happens, and then, then, then we're in a whole different world. But.
Yeah, I mean, there's just. Not only the expenses that I told you.
First thing, it's like.
I mean, we've talked about a year and a half ago, that, that flat rep from that high school was done. Forty rounds, five years ago now. At forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and it's gonna be done in another five years, every ten years it needs redone. So, you're probably talking sixty to seventy thousand dollars in five years. You know, it's. I had all the costs on there, the oil pest control comes down a couple times a year and sprays, that's three hundred bucks each time, it's. There, the HVAC system takes twenty-five filters, you know, at eight bucks a piece, that's a hundred and sixty, seventy bucks a month, you know, it's. One thing after another, you have.
Oh, I'm not having that argument.
Arguments cost, I mean, it's.
I'm not, I'm not gonna have the argument with you, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I'm not, but like I said, we, we pay utilities on this building, we do all this stuff, and they're doing this, and they're doing all this, and we're under one roof. It's kind of a whole different, a whole different, a whole different deal, and then, like I said, you know, that secondhand store, that might be six hundred dollars a month, who knows what, who knows what St. Anne's Air Vares might give you to move up there, you might get. Five hundred dollars, I don't know, I haven't made enough phone calls, I don't know, I mean. I mentioned something that Dean cheats about it, he said, well, we just put forty thousand dollars into that building, but he said. You know, if we could write a check, you never had to deal with it again, maybe fifteen thousand dollars a year, you know, we're spending that way, I don't know. I, you know, I don't know, you know, they're sending that little portion they're spending over there to the school, I don't know, like I said, these are the only conversations I've had. Looking. Outside of the box, how to get more money, you know, and every kid I talked to that had a family is like. You know, we get a little weight room in there. Got a key card, it's twenty-four, seven axis, that's two hundred and fifty bucks for ten families, so that's twenty-five hundred dollars, so. I don't know, I, I, you know, I don't know how far I'm supposed to go with this to say that there are fine, I mean, I get it, maintenance in the roof, and. It's a lot bigger building, there's a lot more that goes into it, obviously, you build anything bigger, the more problems you're gonna have. You know, I don't know, down the road. Your floor starts having problems, stuff start, I, I don't know, I, I, I get it. And like I said, at the end of the deal, if we're here two or three into it, we can't afford it, then we put it up for auction, right?
A couple things, maybe. The city of Ainsworth. Has their city office. And adjacent or joining right there is a gymnasium. And I don't know, but maybe, maybe you could reach out to them and talk to them, see kind of what their costs are, it's a lot smaller than what you're looking at, but. There's someone, there are community who has done that, they have a community center where people are there, you know, you hear them during the meetings and they're, they're in the gym. So there's that, I know they had some issues with their floor, um, but just different things like that, you might be able to talk to them on ways they've sustained theirs historically. You're not gonna find a good business case for a community center, um, they're not moneymakers, they are, they are losers, so. Your ideas are fantastic, uh, uh, you know, of, of the things you're thinking of, I think that that's great. You definitely need to think about that, but as far as. You know, the way James is coming at it, you look at the money, and, and you're not gonna find something that's gonna, you're gonna get in the black, I mean, you got.
Yeah.
So the memberships are.
I understand that.
The memberships are a good idea, yeah, it's more of a quality, like, it's like. Definitely, I mean, but I mean, that's just, again, somebody.
I understand that you're never gonna make money there.
No, it's a scenario.
But you can't lose.
But you can't lose.
You don't wanna lose to be twenty-five, seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, you're gonna be losing twenty-five, thirty, forty thousand a year, and then there's still the part of the old elementary building that you inherit with the property.
Yes.
That sometime down the road, that's gonna need to come down, and that's not getting too.
Doesn't ever have to come down?
We, we might be able to qualify for brownfield, so, uh, EPA has, has money that they give for like things that they consider brownfield, so it's basically anything that's like. Lighted, um, chemicals are on it, or it's.
Mold infested?
Yes, the, the school would probably qualify for brownfield, so like an old gas station, like an old warehouse, an old feed mill, all that stuff. Yes, 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 yeah. So, um, that would qualify, so there, there's money out there to help with tear down costs, it doesn't involve the cost, but it, it helps for a portion of it. So, and then I, I guess I wonder too, okay, so if the city were to look at purchasing it, would just shuttering it to try to prevent the problem of like a hoarder buying it or. You know, getting worse and worse, and then eventually you have to deal with it? Like what would it cost, like, what all costs I guess go into it, if you guys were to purchase it, it just sits there empty, is there still insurance? Maintenance, what all would that look like, but is, is that still?
There wouldn't be, maybe that's a, I mean, you got to have liability insurance on the property.
Is that still cheaper? Okay, is that still cheaper though than like a hoarder buying it and you have a, a gym with field problem, like you have a mill, you know, eventually?
Not so much, pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, the city's gonna have to clean that up eventually, you know?
Yeah, I mean, nobody wants that.
So, it's just, yeah. It's, it's ten thousand, it's in the long run, I guess. Isn't there another school that someone bought, that's cool stuff? Around here?
Page.
Page, yeah, take a drive by Page's school, that's where I was, Inman's, they turned Inman's into a welding place.
Oakdale.
Right?
Turned my bridges, I mean, it's.
I mean, you, you say Oakdale?
Yeah.
Well, somebody bought it, Dave, and then we're gonna refurbish it for their house.
War, right?
Right.
That was six years ago, it's a wonderful.
At least, at least six, yeah.
I, I, well, that's, that's all my problems is. For ten thousand dollars, we voted in and the people were like, hey, I wanna get a place to walk, some of this stuff's going on, and the right people. I don't know, like I said, it's just. It's my opinion, somebody wants to have a family or a reunion in there, there's a whole kitchen in there, you can bring the whole family in there, you know, it's not just. You know, like I was, Brett, Brett sat down there and I said, you know, money's a huge deal. We'll, we'll do a couple junior high. Basketball tournaments or something, you know, when they're raising money, if we need money, you know, we can get twenty guys to go wrestle games and. Put a couple junior high tournaments on, I know when I was doing it in high school, we'd pull six grand in a weekend, you know, so. I don't know, them are just, Denver things that were talked about. Between it, and I said, you know, there's some town teams that are playing in there, I don't know if they wanna. Pay a little bit of money to come and play or not, you know what? Like I said, there's, there's that stuff going on too.
Would your liability insurance cover those things? Or just the liability for the building?
I think, well, what would be the difference with the rodeo arena, I kinda said, mentioned something to Ron about it, and said, I don't think it'd change it much, cause I mean, you're essentially the same liability risk as having a rodeo arena, as you're having a. Somebody play basketball, you know, I mean, I, I, he just said, that was a year ago when I talked to him about it.
Another big, uh, thing that's going on, I know down in Marco, cause my. Sister's family is, does little kids wrestling, that's huge, Tom, he did something like that too.
You know, one time we had a chance, we could've got a gymnastic class to come and introduce the gym, they were looking for space to do it. You know? I, I don't know, like I said, I don't know, I just know ten thousand dollars is pretty cheap. And with, with whatever sales tax you guys think we need to report with to comfortably protect the town. I mean, cause at the end of the day. Gets a penny out of every dollar you're spending to have something. And at the end of the day, some of the people are paying for it that aren't even from town.
Would you have to have community committee as far as raising? A one percent sales tax?
I will probably have to go through the same steps as Paxton. Yeah, that's why I said, if we were gonna do this, we probably have to about have it on the agenda next month, I mean, because we're. We're in a November election, so our time to get it on the bell, it's probably not. All that long. But like I said, I can't, I mean, I asked him to give me him, and he never did, but I was just curious what the school was this year sitting there with nobody in, you know? And keeping it. You know, minimal attempt, church tours, not ruining it, you know, is that? Four hundred, five hundred dollars a month, you know?
You gotta be really careful with that, if you turn it down too far.
Right.
Your windows are right.
Right, you jeopardizing some of your integrity, and I, he said they kinda kept, did they kinda keep it warm enough to?
Yeah, we had it set at forty-five degrees.
Right. You know, on the gym, then people would go into the gym and crank the heater, I believe it on for two days, but. You know, outside of that, I was just not curious what them bills were, you know, we're comparing. Bills of a school with air conditioners running in every room and. Forty students in it, or twelve, I guess, six, maybe, maybe not forty.
You guys might better look at the county visitors committee too for a, a grant, I'm sorry, it's not gonna pay for a lot, but.
A lot of individuals would be wanting to donate. You know, um. So I mean. It's not like there's not money out there, people aren't willing, so this is kinda why.
Dustin brought this.
To me and some people my age, um. Just at least. Go forward into seeing if this is doable. I mean, we should at least take a look at it.
Would you just buy the high school gym?
It was still good, go, all the way they were, the way they used to, if we're gonna buy it for ten thousand dollars, we get the whole block.
Yeah.
If you wanted to purchase the park, would they sell you just the park separately too?
There was some talk about. Possibly trying to get back into the city's hands, but that all goes back on who's buying it, who wants to. You know, the guy that's bidding on it, whatever his ideas are, there's. Still, I remember right beside the school and that playground equipment, he might say you can have it, but. You know, I don't, that was their kinda deal with it, you know, just all. They gotta get rid of it, I don't, I mean, that's, that's their scenario, they're milking this property, that's it, that's exactly what they did in Orchard, that's exactly what they did in Clearwater. It's going to public auction, if we walk out of this meeting and say we're not interested, so.
Can the title of that playground be moved to Schmidt Park?
It's gonna be really expensive, cause you have to pay certified people to move that stuff, and then, I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done, it's gonna cost a village some money to do it, but. It can be done, but you, like I said, the people that.
Move that stuff, the people that put it up or sold it to us have to come. Otherwise the school still, I'd say like a bunch of us went out.
Cause I wrote the grant for that playground.
Moved it, whatever. You have to have a professional pen and move it.
Who gave you money for that?
Um, to the keyword foundation.
Okay, okay, uh. At what point, the rodeo grounds have come up in discussion at previous meetings I've done, is there like an allocated budget for the rodeo ground? Okay, I just wondered if, if you're paying for rodeo grounds and the conference, they'll use. Would, if there were funds there, would it be better, would it be better spent on the community center, but if there's no money to talk about, it doesn't matter.
So do we need to take a vote, or?
I would say we probably just need to put it on our agenda that. Well, I mean, I don't know what we, what, somebody's gonna have to call somebody smarter, not find out what we need to do to actually get this on the ballot.
Oh, you talked to Joe, he's the one that helped.
And then that's gonna come down to next month advertising that, I'm guessing according to James, we have to ask for one percent to make this work, correct?
Yeah, there, there's no way you can do that.
Yeah, so that's where we're at, so it's gonna be up to the school essentially to take a purchase agreement. And the town to vote on, and if the town don't vote on it, it goes to public auction.
We should check, maybe confirm with someone as well too, that you can allocate to just specifically that, and what percent? Are we just at half a percent, like, that's as far as I know?
That's, yeah, that's all we have here.
As, as far as I know, two percent is the max you could go, I think.
Right.
So about you said.
Correct, in a building, you can't tax more.
I can get you guys into on the USDA grant, the grant for the grants tomorrow.
Yeah. I mean, when you're saying a grant, is that like a purchase of grant, or is that like a deal saying? We got a couple bids for air conditioners, and it's gonna cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this, so to get it back up to what we needed it, we could get.
I'll have to look at the specific, it's, it's pretty lengthy, like USDA or EPA, like they have money to help clean up sites, like they don't like seeing those hazardous sites sit there, so. The funds are allocated towards it, they have to figure out how to spend it, so.
And with your brownfields then, that's what she's talking about, they'll help you tear it out, like maybe not a hundred percent, but they'll need.
Right.
Quite a bit, they'll help in, in quite a bit of ways, and then.
Well, it's also expensive to do, so they're helping like offset, like if it has asbestos in it, then you have to go out to a certain dump, so they'll help with like costs of probably disposing.
The trick is, or the only really cap, the only real caveat is that whomever is doing it has to have control of the property. So, you know, you just can't say, hey, we wanna tear this down now, you'd have to have control of the property before it could happen. But, it, it can.
And like, brownfield can be used on like houses and stuff too, so again, that, that theoretical dilapidated house next to you, if it has asbestos in it, you have to get it turned out a certain way. As long as you own the property, the owner of the property is willing to apply for that, like, cause it's up to. So, it's, it's pretty flexible.
I don't know, like I said, I, I just assume before we vote on it, I'd like to have fifty people in here from town, or sixty people in town here saying, saying. Hey, we're pretty for this, if. Forty or fifty people aren't for it, then there's no sense of voting for it, you know, and that's where maybe we need to have our town hall meeting at the school.
I'll find out.
Next month, you know, and say, you know, this is it, everybody in town, here's your chance, voice your opinion, we're gonna open up the floor for thirty minutes.
If you guys can get an order, just a list of email addresses, like we can share a Google sheet, and I might be able to send out reminders and stuff like that, like if the public should come in and weigh their opinions on it.
You know, that's, that's where I'm at on my thinking, I, like I said, maybe none of this is possible as far as the move of the elections, we're gonna be, I don't know. I, I'm, we're a little late to the game, probably. I had just, when they said that the school brought ten thousand dollars, and. The guy that called me and told me he was gonna buy it to put his tractors in and turn the gym quarter out, I figured, you know? I'd take this to the town, cause I said I would, and he said he'd wait, so. And he doesn't care about the other building, he'll probably just sit there for the next forty years for twelve thousand, but. He's looking at a. Half a million dollar shop, he can sell floor out of it, or concrete, or bulk equipment. Just get this, that's right. You got any breath?
Listening?
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that? We can move on then. Uh, police report, anybody have any questions on that?
He, uh, put on a police report. An offer from a company to buy a building. The old taser that was replaced. If you want to sell it.
How much, so is it still? It's like fifteen hundred dollars. No, it's two hundred bucks in all their offering, that's all, I was trying to say, how fucking is it two hundred and twelve? Like fifteen hundred dollars, no, it's two hundred bucks is all they're offering, that's all, that's what I'm saying, I'll, I'll give you two hundred and twelve.
You can seriously just sell it, okay, you know, just sell it back to the company.
Last one, I was gonna say, you, let's just on you later, do something, put it on. I mean, that, that's like a fifteen hundred dollar taser, ain't it, when we bought it?
I know, I think, I, I think they discontinue it, so I don't know how much you can get there.
Well, they discontinue it for the cops, you know? Right, that's what I'm saying, or I, I mean, I don't know if you can do a bid deal in public bid, or.
I know, when I saw we had, first, we had problems with one time. They got sold, and you got, had to return because you didn't have sealed bids on it.
Didn't have sealed bids on it, okay.
So I don't know.
I think it's a certain dollar amount.
Regardless, I, I say we sealed it, then, let's just seal it and see where we're at. We can still list it on. Yeah, I don't know if like, like a police taser like that, if you can legally sell it to them, and privately, we'll have to find out. Well, yeah. On the bills, do you notice his wages were adjusted, that we're gonna pay him out early for. Our agreement was forty dollars a month, and he hasn't been pulling up this end of the bargain, so. So we're not from that one forward, or it's just gonna get out of it.
When we are talking about the police report though, I, I don't know, you're gonna have to get in, get in our book and find out if you can. Put air mattresses out in front of your house, creep out on the ceiling, is that okay? Cause I, I don't think it's real attractive, but. I mean, essentially, it's like having a mattress in your yard, I understand it's an air mattress room. If only you had.
It says a regular mattress.
Is it just a straight up? Yeah, it's dogs sleeping on the outside.
I seen it yesterday.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I don't like the.
Comes in, and then you put a nuisance payment, and you kick that to the curb.
Now, maintenance report.
That shelter down at the park, the one in the playground, the wind, it's raised tech with it, and it needs some.
What are you talking about, the one word?
It's in the playground, one of the picnic tables underneath.
Oh, you're talking the one that's.
That little link to take thing.
What, is it fixable, or it needs work, or?
Well, it should, you can fix it.
No, this is clear over, we're like, if your kids were playing.
Cause if you drive by there, it's leaning right now.
Uh, yeah, I would say just, I don't know who you can find to do it, that might be a problem. Is there anything you can do to it, to temporarily?
I have, I can see what.
Get some torque screws, and a long couple two by fours, just to make sure, again, it doesn't go over till somebody gets there, ah.
Yeah, I can, I can see what I can do, is I just note, saying that day was, my one down there was leaning, I hadn't looked at it, but.
Cause we just re-ruffed all that stuff, didn't we, or we didn't re-ruff that one?
It'll be nothing, I don't think we did.
Well, that one, and I don't know, the other one, I don't know.
Yeah, we didn't do that one.
I just like camera, I did, we re-ruffed both of them, I just told them. Anything else?
Well, I've had the, well, the results, you've got, you already seen them.
Have you heard anything about the street cleaner then?
Ryan's still waiting on filter, that one filter.
So it's the pumps are in, and everything's done, right, we're just waiting on a filter?
Is the tank in?
I don't know, I haven't, I didn't talk to him yet this week, or last week.
A year? Yeah, not too long. You had your fund for this last year, so, maybe.
Is it an engine filter?
It's a cab filter. It's a metal, it's a metal framed filter, and he's been having a heck of a time trying to find one.
Yeah, can it run without it?
Well, it's just. Dirt.
Right.
And out of the controls.
Did, did, is this a cabin?
There is a air conditioner though, right?
It's not the air, it, it, it's got, it's got air in, that goes through it, but it's, uh, it keeps the, it's got air flowing through there.
To keep the cabin from getting dusty, or?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's purpose, cause it probably doesn't have the original one in there, or did Brian take it out?
It's out.
Okay.
Could we maybe look at, just maybe blowing it out temporarily, just to get it running one time?
Yeah, we, like, documents.
So if we can get our streets cleaned before Fun Fest, maybe?
If we can just get it running once before Fun Fest, I think, uh, cause.
Well, I mean, like I said, if it's just a cabin.
If it's a cabin.
I mean, that's just your air conditioner, or it's just like on every eighty, eighty three inch on here, then, you know, they're just gonna go for your air conditioner. It's a cabin air filter now, if we're talking about a diver filter that's running.
Right. Just see, just look into it, and then, maybe I'll talk to you in the next couple days, see what, but if we can just get the streets swept. Once, until we get the thing fully operational, I think, um, yeah, cause I got, I got people asking me about it. So, I'll be seeing my thing, so. Lagoons, are those vegetation coming up at all?
Oh, in, in the lagoons yourself, I haven't, I haven't, I can usually go out there Monday, I didn't go out there, I think. I'll go out this morning.
Alan talked, talked to me about maybe spraying it, I can put some stuff out there, we might be able to just, once this spring, and then that would cover us. Potentially for the year, so I don't know.
Okay, with the, if you're not, I mean, we don't want stuff growing, that's all.
Yeah, cause that one time I was out there, it took me.
Yeah.
Like three hours?
Yeah.
And then the stuff was tall, we'd just stay on it, we'd just get after it, so.
I imagine after the rain and the heat, yeah, it probably.
Cause I can put some primer stuff out there, um, that'll keep stuff from going, um, it's pretty potent stuff, and it's. Label for water, so. But, that's kind of a conflict of interest, I think, so you guys decide.
I don't know, I'm, I just assume have it done, unless you know somebody else is gonna come do it. We always, then we always spray it like two or three times, or something.
We've always done it, I think, um, twice.
Yeah.
But I think, we, cause now, now it's pretty well under control, if we just do it maybe once in the spring, and keep that stuff bad. We probably only have, we probably only have to do it once a year.
Yeah.
You know, so.
What do you have any, and what are you talking, right, so.
I mean, herbicides are up a little bit, but I mean, I quoted, cause Clearwater called me, they wanted me to do theirs too, um, and. I've, I got my, um, uh, commercial advocate's license, so I quoted them basically. A hundred and fifty dollars a pit, I can do it for, cause I think, last time I did it.
We just got two pits out there.
Yeah.
We're talking three hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I mean, three hundred dollars a year.
Uh, to me, it seems like a. I don't believe, absolutely not, we have to wait till next month to approve it, I don't know, it's three hundred dollars, so.
I'll tell you what, um, I'll look at it, and then I'll just shoot your bid. And then, maybe on the group text, like I did with the, the sign out there, cause that's not that quick.
Yeah, no. Give us a price, and I'll let Sharon know if it's not too bad, unless you think we need to put it on next month's agenda.
No, I think it, it's just a maintenance that we would have to do anyway, it's like spraying the park, so we, we have to do.
Then Sharon talked to me about maybe putting some stuff out by the ball, the ball fields, the infield, to keep some of that grass from creeping in.
You were gonna say, yeah, you were gonna spray it.
Yeah, I didn't have time to do it, but, I can, if the wind dies down in the evening, it's usually the best time, so I can just have to work. So, I can put, I mean, just spray the perimeter and the whole thing, I can do the same thing kinda with the. You're talking maybe forty dollars a field, you know? So, like I said, I'll put a bid together, on the sheer of the group text.
Well, it's just, that's just maintenance, I mean, we really don't have to have that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just.
Everybody knows, be aware of that. All you got?
Yep.
Police report.
Okay, I'm gonna be gone next Thursday and Friday. And, um, we're gonna have to have our water come and redo our water rates to look at them. Cause when I did the USDA request, we come up, the sewer loan, we come up. In the hole from last year, so we're gonna have, I know, when he did that, when we raised our water rates last time, he said we really shouldn't raise the sewer rates. But we didn't, you didn't, so I think we, I just think it's okay with the board, I'll have Randy come up. While I give you the information, and he does it, I think that they offer us, but, and then you can look at it. Have them, have whatever board meetings that you want to, you decide. And, um, the certified letter I sent last week to the customer that, um, hadn't paid. One is, one is paid, but they never picked up the certified letter I got back today in the mail, so the other one. The one that was really in arrears was taken care of, because the property was rented, but the other one isn't, I didn't know if he wanted to. Do anything about it, or just.
It's trigger house?
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, it's kinda been the same deal, it's, she got lucky, Sharon ended up on it, right, I mean, I, I think I'd send, what's the certified, like dollar or something? Dollar twenty five or something.
Oh, I sent it certified.
No, I was just saying.
She's not gonna pick it up.
She won't pick it up, she won't pick up her certified.
They, they send her notices twice, cause it's on the, and I just got it back today, so. And then I might.
Well, I would say don't send it certified this time.
I don't think she'll pick it up.
I know, that's fine, but we can say we sent one certified and one other, and then we do exactly, exactly what we said we were gonna do on deal, correct? Cause we sent a certified letter, and she's obviously not getting it, so she's avoiding the scenario, so my scenario is. We sent her certified letter with all the information on it, we've got it documented, we sent one, and it wasn't certified. So, I say we follow ahead of the plan and remove the meter, she's got a cost there, extra money to go through. Cause as far as I'm concerned, she hasn't paid it for what, four months, six months?
About that, um, and we're gonna have, um. The vet from Chambers will be over here next Wednesday from six to seven, for the pet clinic, we're. We're gonna do it in the shop area, somehow we'll, we could put something up.
You should just got that trailer deal, right, or can't?
No, it's, um.
This is Amy Halsey.
Amy, Amy Halsey, the vet from Chambers, she comes over every year about this time. For people, I put it in the paper, and it should run this week, two year. Um, and then I wanted to ask the board, um, if I could go to finance conference in June. It's the fifteenth and seventeenth through the seventeenth. Um, that's to give continuing credits for the state requires, with the treasury to. And I know with Bush Conference, I don't get enough credits, exactly, I only go from Wednesday to Wednesday afternoon to Friday. That's like two, two days, so, um, that costs three hundred and fifty for the conference itself.
Two days?
Actually, three, there's, it starts Wednesday afternoon, so Wednesday all day, Thursday, and. I haven't seen the scheduling yet, but it's Friday, and usually you can get out right there on Fridays, I don't know, it's in carny. I did it last year, but I did it last year, now they're.
I'm final to the P D, I've got works.
I think that's all, um.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session.
Can I have a question before you do that? Are you gonna change the dump hours?
It is, yep, yep, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Cause I've had people ask me, it's, I don't know, I just know it's open on Saturday.
Yeah, no, it's, which I posted it, it's. In the cam this morning, but I told him, he's, why didn't see it, and I'm like, I'm gonna get it on Friday, where.